I move to suspend policy ninety-one thirty to expand the role of the board in order to hear directly from the complainant and if appropriate to follow up with relevant staff.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Here now, roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Public appearances. All right. Consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Oh, wait. I think, really.
We always do an announcement after.
I know. I think we should. Okay, I'll be hitting myself, but I'd really like to pull a retirement off of the agenda and vote no.
I believe the second.
No, I'm just joking.
I believe the second tenant.
Inappropriate, totally inappropriate decision. I'll behave.
Please do it.
I know.
All in favor?
You will.
I will.
Come on.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
See back there.
Recognition?
Okay, so the first recognition is was referenced in the consent agenda that the board just approved was the resignation of our high school principal, Paul Brodust, and I would add that we certainly accept this with regrets, but we're also very excited for Paul, his future, and happy for him, and certainly very, very appreciative for the work that he's provided for the district, our students and parents. So, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. It's been a part of our life.
What's next?
Don't know.
That's good. You should keep it that way for a while. Keep the actions open.
Okay, then I have a couple additional recognitions. Congratulations to Menona Grove Silver Connection, who had a great performance at their first competition of the season. They were awarded grand champions and took home additional honors of best vocal group and best choreography. Additional honors went to M.G. Owen, senior, it's going to be Owen Growth, who was awarded best male performer of the day. It's Roth?
Roth.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Owen Growth.
Nice.
GDS students participated in the Young Authors and Writers Conference at the Milwaukee Art Museum in December. They collaborated on a book entitled Art of Writing that will be published in May. Congratulations to our students. And students at Winnicott organized a food drive for Saint Stevens before winter break. Almost sixteen hundred food items were delivered. Thank you to all students and families who contributed.
Nice. Thank you.
Correspondents? Correspondents move to the superintendent report.
I have one item to report on that just occurred this week as regarding our agreement with the Mass, the McAlton School District and our Nuestamundo, their Nuestamundo Charter School and the agreement that we have had in place since two thousand twelve regarding the availability of five seats for Menona Grove resident students. MMSD was just notified this week from DPI that there's an issue with compliance to charter school law in that preference cannot be given to a set number of Menona Grove students based on their residency, and the issue is because MMSD has a very long waiting list and they turn away Madison resident students every year. And so, but our Menona Grove students are getting priority seats before the Madison residents. So, they were informed of this potential violation, and so they have their legal counsel looking into it. We have consulted with our legal counsel and at this point, you know, waiting for a response to that. But until that, we have additional information. Normally, we'd be sending out communication to our families at this time about the availability of seats. We'll put that on hold until we get more information. So, I'll certainly up the board, date the board regularly as soon as I have more to report.
Was there an indication that could impact families who are already currently have been enrolled there?
Yeah, we're not sure. We have not gotten.
Well, given they have to enroll in kindergarten and other things. Yeah, okay. Interesting. Wow.
So. Grandfather and keep them there.
Yeah, I think the issue is about the process for accepting new enrollees. So, it would be the whole.
Interesting, it didn't get.
Yeah, I will also add one other piece of information. The initial response from Madison is that they will be looking to apply for waiver would be one possible response, and so they're, you know, preparing that. But instead, our legal counsel hasn't had an opportunity to fully review and consult with theirs. It is, of course, a joint agreement, and so we certainly won't stake in that. So, in fact, why did this come up now is just through a review process at DPI, and as you know, they have different administrative staff that come and go, and some people look at things differently than others.
Right. Interesting.
I was going to say, is this a joint agreement that we have which makes us a participant in this?
Yes.
And, I mean, isn't it just that we can't discriminate against those three seats that are sort of ours to, I don't know?
Well, it's based on, yeah, the basis of this, you know, correspondence is on charter school law.
Right. Yeah, but Madison can give priority to Madison students?
No, that.
For open enrollment into the charter.
Well, that because it's the instrumentality of the school district that, you know, Easter Munder is, that the district has more control and they have a responsibility
Right.
To provide the education for students in Madison district because of the instrumentality.
But my question is, does the joint agreement also make it an instrumentality of the Menona Grove?
No.
I doubt it.
No, according to charter school law.
Yeah, and the charter school law is very clear. We're aware that with our own, you know, G twenty-one, that when there are more applicants than seats available, it must be done by lottery.
Right.
I mean, I'm just wondering if there's.
Yeah, interesting. Okay. Well, hopefully the best on that one.
Real quick, before we move on, I guess, again, not for a long discussion, just a number of board members were on the board when that original agreement was, took place in two thousand twelve, and was just a little bit curious about, you know, that, how that started, and was that at a request of our board with that lease agreement that those five seats?
I think it was. It was part of our rental agreement, and I don't think it ever occurred to us to look at the legality of that.
It was. Yeah, correspondence from them, they definitely were scrutiny from legal counsel.
They do look at it, okay.
Yeah, so we have two separate agreements, with the lease agreement and then the sixty-six oh three oh one agreement about, and they're all hand in hand.
At the time, they did feel.
My thought was that the sixty-six oh three oh one agreement was what made that legal because, you know, because we have an agreement with them, and it sort of makes it part of our district. So, those seats are essentially part of our district, and we would have to fill them by lottery by the same rules that we would use for our enrollment students. I mean, well, and actually not even for our, we would fill them by lottery from applicants under charter school rules.
Yeah, so clearly, the board's legal counsel at that time felt the agreement was legal.
Within the charter law.
And it was never contested or questioned by DPI until now.
And just to be clear for everybody, there's five seats, three of them are, two of them, two of the seats are we pay for, they're essentially open enrollment rates for those two seats, and three are tuition waived streets, seats. Is that not correct, or is it?
There are two or three, three we pay for.
Two or three, three we pay for, and there might be a different, I'm wondering, there also might be a different application of the law to those different groups of seats.
Yeah. So, as soon as I get a response from our legal counsel, I'll make sure I keep the reporting form on that, so.
All right. Thanks. Okay, moving to board reports. Susan Fox, Personnel Committee.
All right. Personnel committee did meet yesterday, and because we met on the subject of bargaining the night before, you all saw the same documents that we shared in the Personnel Committee, and I really have nothing to report other than that the negotiating team will be getting back to us. We have another date set up on January twenty-seventh, four o'clock, with their thoughts. They are interested in making some changes from our proposal, but we're moving along. Not in, not in the, not in the structure, but in the, yeah, some of the way that we're talking about the way, basically, what they're bargaining is distribution of the base wage, and that's what they want to tweak, so. There'll be more, hopefully at the end of the month.
Peter, yeah, sustainability?
We met on December seventeenth, but that was really a very, very much a working meeting where we were talking about how we can move forward on the five things that I talked about the last time I presented a report here. And so, we don't have any conclusion. We're essentially, we're talking about process and moving forward on those, so there isn't any, anything to report out at this point.
Susan Mannett, Policy Committee.
We met on December nineteenth, and we discussed board policy fifty-one thirteen, full-time public school, open enrollment, and the fact that our policy is basically our written policy versus the Neola policy, and whether or not we want to consider some of the components of that policy. So, we're going to continue to look at that. We're going to look at some SAPA policies and kind of see what we think. In the past, we've been comfortable with that, and we would certainly work with Jared before major changes were made. Then the second policy we talked about was video surveillance and electronic monitoring. There have been some, a few statutory changes that we needed to look at just a little bit, so we reviewed that as well, and we'll be bringing those to the board.
All right. Moving to possible action items. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one open enrollment recommendations.
Okay, so you may recall that annually, the board must approve open enrollment seats for the following school year in January every year. That's a statute requirement, and so there are a couple documents, the actual recommendation document, as well as an enrollment document with some background information for planning, and Jared Rosing compiles this and put this together for us, so I'll let him walk you through the document and the recommendation.
Sure, so the recommendation format is a little different than it's been in the past year. So, in the past years, that document would just show the grade level and then our total open enrollment by grade, and then it would just list special education as a whole. However, the law does require us to identify open enrollment by program, and so that's why you see that across the board. So, you can see that we're looking at with special education, of those hundred and seventy-six spots for open enrollment, it's not fourteen or a total of sixteen for special education. It's not additional to the hundred and seventy-six. The hundred and seventy-six is exactly the overall open enrollment seats that we collect. Now, how that calculation looks, and I understand that that, that grade level looks large, but yeah, remember that we have, some of our grade levels have two schools that combine into one, and we don't approve based on building, we base it on grade level. So, the document that I attached for administrative, under administrative content, shows you our calculation, and when we're doing our open enrollment calculation, we use our class size goal. So, based on rolling our kids forward and looking at potential residential growth, and then looking at the number of sections that we currently have and the number of sections that we're projecting for next year, we determine what the average class size is, and if the average class size is below the class size goal, the difference is ultimately our open enrollment. And that's pretty clear in our board policy, and it's pretty clear in state law that that's how we're supposed to do it. Obviously, we can take into account potential enrollment, but they also want us to have the justification of why we're saying that you're potentially going to have fifteen new first graders. And if we haven't had fifteen new first graders, you know, in the last five, seven years, we really can't justify that right now. Now, obviously, if we had some historical data that's showing us that, we can utilize our enrollment studies, and we, we're able to incorporate that. But what's important to also know is that, you know, we're meeting our board's, our board's class size goal, but then we also have maximums. And if you look, for example, in kindergarten, the goal for kindergarten is twenty, and so if we have eight sections, the maximum size of that class can be up to twenty-three. Not that we're planning to go to twenty-three, but right now, we're planning to staff at the goal. If we did have a large number of open enrollment, we could, or a large number of residents come in, we could actually take twenty-four more kids in that grade level before we would hit the maximum. So, we feel pretty confident. And something that we've changed last year, going into open enrollment, typically, we've been pretty conservative in the January numbers, and then we come back in July and ask for more. And last year, we were at approximately a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five seats. What we're trying to do is we're trying to be upfront and try to do our projections to the best of our ability, so we're not coming back in July, because the open enrollment period starts at the beginning of February and runs through the end of April. And it is a major task to identify the number of families that do apply, but then if we do go back in July, trying to get those kids to get enrolled, and we're accepting them, and we're working through the waitlist, by being able to approve those open spots in January, it allows us to process those applications early on so our schools can really plan for the kids that are coming. Now, I can tell you, based on the numbers that we're recommending, on the last couple of years, we have not even received some of those number of applications for kindergarten. You know, typically, we've only seen fifteen on average in the last couple of years for kindergarten, first grade. Right now, we are looking at a little larger than that for the seats, so I do feel that we're probably not going to fill all the seats by. And then obviously, as we open up a school in a couple of years, then there's going to, I mean, these kids, we're transitioning them through and continuing to monitor what they look like in future years at different grade levels.
Dean?
On open enrollment, do there, is there a, when they apply, do they have a choice of school, or do they take potluck, whether their college grows?
So, when a student applies for open enrollment, they can put a school of preference, but the, the school district has complete ability to place them wherever. So, for example, we might have an individual that applies for first grade and puts on, they would like to go to Taylor Parade, and when we do the random draw and we pull them out at the spot that we have available at Winnicott, they get placed at Winnicott. We do try, but if we get pulled out, there's spots at both of those schools, we will then obviously respect and honor their preferred school.
And Jared, I just want to clarify that the, the open enrollment seats that we're looking at right now for four K are all offsite?
Yes.
Those are all offsite locations?
As of right now, that's where we're looking at the space. We don't specifically say that in the approval, because if we have some changes in residence, we might end up placing some students.
I was just, I just saw zeros at the other schools, and then.
Yes.
Throw that up there. Okay.
I'm just curious about something at the high school, and maybe Paul can answer this question, you know, where we're having twenty-five students, and the question really is, do the open enrollment students look like the Menona Grove students in terms of the classes they take, or does it change the, in any way, the classes and the distribution of classes that we offer?
I don't have that in front of me, but I don't really, I'm having them come in the summer and enroll. They're pretty similar in what they choose for electives as our, as our own students, so there's not much difference. We haven't seen them kind of any kind of trends where they've gone into more music or more world language, those kind of things. They come in as pretty typical and a kind of a spread.
Do they, you know, fill out a class, allow us to offer classes that we wouldn't otherwise offer? Is that?
Not really, because of the, you know, with twenty-five students, because the number of our classes, they really don't make a difference in what class we offer. What it does allow us the privilege to do is, the consistency to do is, when we have fluctuations in open enrollment in eighth grade, and I've staffed and worked with Dan on that to staff for about two hundred and sixty to seventy-five ninth graders, when we're able to fill that gap almost every year, we have typically about twenty-five or thirty open enrollment students, it allows me to remain stable with my staffing and not have to decrease folk staffing or put a lot of staff on open modes, so it's kind of a luxury for us because we're able to have really a consistent number whom we use open enrollment to fill that space.
Great, thank you.
Motion to approve.
I move approval of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one open enrollment recommendations as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Second is revised twenty nineteen, twenty twenty co-curricular and additive schedule.
Okay, so I gave the board a little bit of a, you know, background information on this one. It's a little bit of a unique, normally when we're adding up co-curricular positions because it's a new program, and as you know, the diving is not a new program for our school, but until, in the past, we have never actually employed our own dive coach, and so we've, our divers have utilized a coach from an area school, the last few years it's been working with Edgewood. But as we look at this, we, the difference is, it's not a co-op. So, our divers are actually with our school swim team when they compete together in, in our WIA tournaments, so it's not an actual co-op. So, the reality is that we've been making some payments to this coach, and it really needs, through IRS regulations, the person needs to be employed at the district. He's coaching our kids, you know, so that he should have a separate contract with Menona Grove School District. And so, that's why we're looking to add the position of dive coach to our schedule, and as far as the dollar amount, that's very comparable to what Edgewood and what coach has been paid, as well as you look at the rest of our comparables for different coaching positions. That was a recommendation from our high school administration for that dollar amount.
Is that one of our, her staff already, or?
Coach is not a teacher in our building.
Okay.
But he's worked with our students in the past.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
In, in the future, though, those positions would go to Menona Grove employees or teachers first, correct?
If we have teachers.
If it opens up.
Absolutely. Yeah, we always.
I move approval of the revised two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty curricular and additive schedule as presented. My second.
Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, policy revisions for first reading.
Again, if it's, I would like to make a motion.
This is just discussion.
This is the first reading.
Yeah, just discussion.
Oh, first reading.
Okay.
Sorry, it's okay. Yeah, the majority of these are from the last Neil update, and so our policy committee.
Basically, not substantive.
Right.
Basically, it's been a change in the statute by adding a word or taking a word out or adding a statutory reference, and, and just so you know, we check every single statutory reference to make sure the language is consistent. We check all of their recommendations. Takes us a really long time.
Yeah, for how few real changes there are here.
Yeah, it was.
It's a lot.
It looks like a lot, but it's, it's, it's basically little stuff, right? Nothing major.
I was no one of interest, and this is really, to me, more of a correction from Neola, the graduation requirements.
All right.
For whatever reason, the board approved graduation requirements as far as how many credits, you know, for each subject area, were not part of the policy, even though it was board action to approve and, and so on. And for whatever reason, Neola placed them in admin guidelines, and that made no sense because I have authority to change admin guidelines, but I don't have the authority to change, you know, graduation requirements. So, they're in actual policy, to me, where they belong or should have always been to begin with.
So, there's nothing different there, it's just where they are.
Yeah.
Easier to find.
First reading.
Right.
I, I, just a procedural thing on the, on the way these are posted, the public for the most part, I mean, when I look at board docs, I get the administrative contact, I can click and see the new policies, but they're not posted that way under public content, meaning they can't see, the public can't see them as, you know, and I would think that, I don't see any reason why these drafts can't be put as part of the public, posted as public.
The reason is because the way board docs works, while they're in draft, you have to have a login in order to view them. So, if we did post these links in public, people in the public couldn't see them anyway without a password, login password. So, we have had people contact our office in the past that have had interest, so we do make sure we list the policies in public content that are up for review, and if someone requests a copy of them, Joyce can print the PDF and, and, you know, email them that way.
That's annoying. I mean, the public should have, be able to see these.
Well, they do see, they do see the final ones, and, but yeah, that's, I mean, I think that's.
Neola is really restrictive.
Yeah, but this is just a board doc sort of bug, is all.
I, I know, but it's also a Neola bug, and that is that when you're trying to, remember the old days?
Actually, you, you can, because I tried this again. If, if we're already logged into our board docs and we want to look at another district's policy that has board docs, you can't get in.
Yeah.
You have to totally log out of ours.
Log out of ours.
But I did try looking some up the other day before I ever logged into ours, and I was able to get into those very districts we talked about. So, it just, it's hard, yeah, it's just difficult to work.
I just think we ought to make sure the public has access to these before we prove.
Well, we, we do, but in a cumbersome way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it isn't that we withhold it because we don't want to see it because it's a draft, it's because it's difficult to access.
Moving on. The twenty twenty proposed Waspe delegate assembly resolutions. I am the delegate for the Waspe for us, if there's anything.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Paul, thank you for putting me on that first year.
That's right. I, with all, I thought they all made sense, and I was actually pleased to see the one on the Native American mascot, so it went in pretty much as we directed, because I wasn't sure it would, so. With, and with some caveats, I thought were good, so. I, my personal recommendation would be support all of them, but I don't know how everybody else feels. We usually just get a sense, I don't, we don't usually.
And if there's something you want to just discuss about, you can always email me, and then I can look at it, and we can talk. And then just let everybody know that on Thursday at the Waspe convention, I was asked and I accepted to be on the equity panel.
Oh.
So, that'd be a hoop.
Okay. Oh, and also, well, while we're on the delegate assembly, it's kind of relevant, the WPE, the Wisconsin Public Education Network is having a gathering on Thursday, and I'll just forward that to everybody to make sure you get it.
All right. I think one of the important ones, by the way, is the mental health categorical aid to establish a, what is it, a twenty-five dollar or up to, you know, but a stipend for schools and a categorical aid for mental health.
Yeah, those money ones very rarely go anywhere, but it's good to have, they keep plugging away, and it gives them the basis to ask for it, yeah, continually.
Exactly.
Yep.
All right. Facilities planning update.
Okay, so the first part that is kind of the monthly, you know, written report is, you know, pretty short, because you know, we're to the, you know, final process of the design, and so there are two new items on here that, you know, Jared can speak to, or both of us can for that matter, but the furniture pilot is a really exciting part, you know, and Reed has taken leadership with that, working with our teachers, and you see some photos attached, really excited, and the initial, it's only been since break, and some of the initial feedback from some of our teachers is really positive, and so, so if you have any questions about the furniture pilot.
Great photos, it's pretty cool.
My only question about this for the furniture, the furniture is related to its durability compared to more traditional furniture, and this, what is the long-term, the cost of over its lifetime going to be, and do we have any comments or thoughts on that? I mean, if we could provide any data?
I actually have no response.
I mean, does the manufacturer, do they provide us any, any idea of what experience is for this kind of stuff in terms of its durability and quality?
So, I mean, so during the process of selecting this and reviewing.
All right. I think one of the important ones, by the way, is the mental health categorical aid. It's to establish a, what is it, a $25 or up to, you know, but a stipend for schools and a categorical aid for mental health.
Those money ones very rarely go anywhere, but it's good to have them there. They keep plugging away. I mean, it gives them the basis to ask for it, yeah, continually.
Exactly.
Yep.
All right, facilities planning update.
Okay, so the first part that is kind of the monthly, you know, written report is, you know, pretty short because, you know, we're to the, you know, final process of the design. And so there are two new items on here that, you know, Jared can speak to, or both of us can for that matter. But the furniture pilot is a really exciting part. You know, and Reed has taken leadership with that and working with our teachers. And you see some photos attached, really excited. And the initial, it's only been since break, and some of the initial feedback from some of our teachers is really positive. And so if you have any questions about the furniture pilot...
Great photos. It's pretty cool.
My only question about this furniture is related to its durability compared to more traditional furniture. And this, what is the long-term, the cost of over its lifetime going to be? And do we have any comments or thoughts on that? I mean, if we can provide any data?
I actually have no response.
I mean, does the manufacturer, do they provide us any idea of what experience is for this stuff in terms of its durability and stuff?
So I mean, so during the process of selecting this, and we can also speak to this, is obviously the stuff that we've selected. So some of the stuff is obviously not as durable as obviously a desk is. And so we do have desks still in the classrooms, but we've definitely been reassured from the, you know, the vendor. And so these are things that we also will be reaching out to other schools to check that have some of this stuff to verify. I mean, obviously, they're telling us that it has a long shelf life based on what it's made out of, but we also want to verify that.
Right, I mean, because my only concern is if we spend a lot of money on this, we have to replace it all in ten years because that's not in the budget. Whereas, I mean, if a service life of a same desk is twenty years, how does this compare? And I don't, I don't even know what we need to be careful about the budget.
We have to push our old furniture way past its limit.
Well, I, yeah.
Because you know what I've, what I have experienced out in some areas of the new elementary school, it seemed like the kids don't do all of that pushing and fair wear and tear on them because it's comfortable, it's, everything is open. It seemed like the mind, you know, the brain change of the traditional. And now it seemed like, you know, with, I don't know, it's the ambiance of the classroom now is, you know, less wear and tear on them. They feel so relaxed.
But all you forget is what needs one student thinks, well, it'd be fun to punch this phone full of holes with my pencil, you know. I just want to know that we reassure that other districts have experience with this that shows that it's reasonably durable and is not going to be a budgetary problem for us in a few years. That's what I want to be sure of. Not that I don't like it. I mean, if there's more durable options in it for that panel.
How many, how many schools have been built like the past, what, three, four years now that has this furniture, you know, like Wanakee?
Lake Mills has some.
I would say any of the schools that have been built in the last number of years, this is the type of furniture.
We should probably investigate my accident house and hold them up.
The problem with that is it doesn't answer the question because if it's been there three or four years, I need to know.
Well, we may not know, yeah, but it's worth asking the question.
I go in these school classrooms, it already looks like the school I went to. That's right. You know, five rows of seven.
They sit on the floor now. They're just relaxed, comfortable now, so.
As a former special education student, I really appreciate that they're able to be flexible and be comfortable.
Yeah, I think that's a really valid point as far as how they treat the furniture to them because they like it. And so you're not going to have, hell, it's mostly middle school kids who are always leaning back in their chairs because they're not comfortable at all for a lot of kids. So this is nice. But so I hope we find out they're reasonably durable.
Yeah, we just, I think that's a value.
Right.
But it's a zero-sum game. If we're spending more on furniture, we're spending less on something else.
Right.
That's all.
Yep, it's worth looking into.
And then, you know, the second piece, last month, you know, it was reported, you know, that we're wrapping up the, you know, bidding process and subcontracting. And so Jared has posted the final pieces of that as well as some information about the process. So you can answer the questions you have on that.
So Jared, yeah, we're going to talk about this first.
So the two arguments that, and I apologize for just getting them uploaded this afternoon, but I wanted to put in writing with the overall view of the bid process. And so I've been fortunate enough to, in my previous school district, go through a building of a new school and been here to have some other opportunities to work with some other contractors. And I can tell you that this bid experience that I've went through the last couple of months has been probably one of the most transparent, in my opinions, and easy to work with. So I wanted to list that out because I think one of the things that is really sometimes frustrating is that, you know, we have a construction manager, which is, you know, different than an owner's rep. And the construction manager also performs some of these duties. And that was part of the reason that I did recommend going with a construction manager is because if there's a situation that happens and we need that school to open up in two or three weeks, we can fall back and ask Fendorf to do that as we continue to before. Where an owner's rep might not be able to do that, they have to bring someone else in. So what we did is Fendorf wrote all the trade packages based off of UA. So it's not like they're writing an RFP and asking for different types of qualifications. UA pretty much writes the specs. Like, this is the type of steel we want. This is where it needs to go at. And so what Fendorf does is they compile all that and they send it out. So they sent us a list of all the proposed bidders that they have dealt with in the past and sent bids out from all the other school projects that they've done. In addition to that, we were able to provide Fendorf with a list of vendors that we had worked with, either with GDS or other projects that we've done. In addition to that, there's really two large bid clearinghouses out there where you can just post it, and people are going there and checking for bids. In addition, we did publish it in the Herald Independence that we were, that these bids were available to make sure that we were trying to cover every aspect. In addition to all that, once we sent out the bids, the bids that Fendorf had identified, they had told us ahead of time the trade packages that they were going to bid on. Those bids were due to me, not to Fendorf. The other part of it is, is when Fendorf sent out all those, I contacted all those companies that were bidding on a package that Fendorf was going to, to let them know that those bids were due to myself and that we would encourage people to bid on this package, that it wasn't a guarantee that Fendorf was getting it. We wanted to ensure that. And I can tell you, there were a couple of projects that, or trade packages, that the lowest bidder was someone else, and we went with someone else that Fendorf bid on.
So Jared, I have a quick question. So like for carpentry, for example, those, the bids never went to Fendorf. They went to you.
So on carpentry, they came to you.
And you made a decision based on the bids that you got that Fendorf was the one was bid the best for that?
Yes, yeah. And so that was the bidding process. And so then on bid day, all the other bids went to Fendorf. We met at Fendorf, and UA was there, and myself were there, and we opened those bid that went up there. And then, like Eric said, the bids that came to me, I opened those up after the two o'clock to put them into the overall spreadsheets. We then worked through those that, you know, the spreadsheet really shows who the lowest bidder is, and then we list out all the other bidders. And then we contact those bidders to verify the bids that were submitted. Because, you know, you might have a difference between a forty-five percent. So you might have someone that's at, you know, a million dollars, and someone's at 1.7. Well, why is that happening? So we want to vet those out to ensure that we're not going... The goal of it is, is to eliminate change orders later on in the process. So we didn't want to have someone that was going to bid at 1.7, and that was truly probably what the bid should have been, but someone came in at a million dollars, and that's who we selected. So we go through that, and Fendorf, and UA vet all those bids out. And then they compile that list, and then the district makes the decision of who to hire. What I can tell you is that on all the bids that came back, we ultimately went with the lowest, most qualified bid. There was no bids that came back where we decided that this company was...
Qualified.
Qualified and $20,000 higher, we went with them. I can tell you that all the bids that came back that were selected or the subcontractors that is in that other list that shows the breakdown between the new school and renovations, those were all the lowest bidders that we did recommend to take.
Trade package, structural steel and metal has been, there's two of those. One was awarded to Breeze, one was awarded to Fendorf. What's, why is it split to?
Which one are you looking at?
It's one renovation, one...
So I separated, so there's the first section.
Ah, you're right. I'm sorry. I apologize. You're right. I had the type that one's a renovation and the one's a...
No, I'm sorry. So we did bid those out separately, and we did the renovations first, right before Thanksgiving, and then right before winter break, we brought in the new school.
Can you do us a favor and forward us your spreadsheet with the bidders and the bid amounts? I want to see how this all adds up to a new school.
Okay.
Thanks.
Future meeting dates. Special board meeting coming up January 29th. TLE, 14th.
What are they?
TLE committee meetings, January 14th at six.
So, yeah, I could draw attention to full board special meetings here this next month. So the 15th of January is the second Equity Institute, specifically for board members, and the forest at 5:30. If you have not registered or are still interested, you may register yet this week. I will say, unfortunately, wasn't a ton of information, detail provided to board members about what the content was. And I've since got more information. It's really going to be focused on policy. And they've asked us even to bring along a couple of our sample policies, and they're going to examine, you know, that piece of it. So I'll get an email out to the board with that new information. But it'll be facilitated by the same individuals that were in the first one with Percy Brown and Rainey Briggs. But I think the email we got earlier in the week at this point, there were fifty-some people in Dade County, board members that were registered, so.
You know, the last one, because that was here.
Yeah.
You know, because of prior engagement, I couldn't attend except for I got the last half hour, and I worked a lot in the last half hour. So I'd recommend, with those facilitators, I would recommend this.
So we'll set a reminder email tomorrow with the additional information that we received. And if you haven't registered, please consider it if you're available. And then, as it was noted, the special board meeting on the 29th. And then, just want to confirm, we put this date out, but we have scheduled February 5th for our next board workshop. That would be with Jill Huskison and looking at long-range budget planning. So we need to confirm that. I mean, that's a date that Jill's available. But if you have it up, you can look at your calendars now to make sure that we can make that work. We haven't talked about...
What's the date being...
I will not be, I will be not be opening.
That is February 5th. It's a Wednesday.
I will not be opening.
Anyone else with a conflict that night?
Took me a while to boot up.
Would you like us to consider a different date?
No, I'm fine with you guys going. By the way, you want, go ahead.
Okay, so at this point, we'll have it scheduled. If you, after tonight, you realize you do have a conflict, please let us know as soon as possible. But otherwise, we have, we keep that a firm date then. So those are the only two special full board, you know, meetings. And then you need to schedule one based upon tonight's motion, another special meeting.
And that, we said we'd try to do it in January, so that doesn't give us a lot of day, time, so. We should look at a couple of dates, maybe?
Well, I think one of the problems is that WSB comes right in the middle of that. And if you go to the pre-workshop, that's Tuesday. So that basically leaves Monday, the 20th, and Monday, the 27th, maybe the 28th.
Thursday, the 16th, right?
Yes.
We have a meeting.
Oh, all right, okay.
Learning can't do that one.
It'd be a Saturday morning or afternoon.
That's funny. Did you say Saturday?
I heard it was Saturday morning. We've done that before in the past.
We have done that sometimes.
Well, I'm on board. I have Saturday.
Eric can't make it Saturday.
So we eliminated...
Saturdays, every Saturday.
We eliminated the 16th.
Yes.
Monday, the 20th.
That's, you know...
It's not my favorite, but I could make it work. We do it at least by six.[1631.81]